Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special council meeting. It doesn't look like our council has a quorum yet, but we'll go ahead and call it a roll joint, please.
Hallie?
Yes.
Bramsonson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming. We have one very exciting agenda item this evening, and that is a presentation by the Iowa Architect Foundation, who just one month ago did some incredible work for the city of Fairfield, the community of Fairfield, in putting together some recommendations for us that I think will transform our community in a very creative and very useful way for us. The presentation is chock-full of recommendations and information. We all did, those of us who participated a month ago, did receive this, but it really did warrant a more full presentation to our community. So, thank you so much again for coming down this evening and going through this for us again. So, Claudia, if you would like to go ahead and start and introduce your crew, and we'll get started.
Thank you. Is this on? Okay.
Yes.
So, thank you so much for inviting us back again. We loved Fairfield so much, but we didn't know we were going to be back so soon.
Soon.
So, anyway, it's a treat. We got to go to the cider house, and that made us very happy. Anyway, I am the executive director for the Iowa Architectural Foundation, and this is part of our team that was here. We had eight people before, but I'll introduce them. It's Ed Sankey, who's with the Design Partnership in West Des Moines; Dennis Reynolds, who's with Reynolds Urban Design; and Bill Anderson, who's with WA Architecture in Des Moines. And so, these folks are some of our many wonderful volunteers that work for the foundation. Our, I just want to give you a quick, super-quick overview of what the foundation does. We try to inspire the appreciation of architecture and good design in everyone. And so, we do programs that serve children. We do walking tours. We do classes and lectures and all that kind of thing. One of the main things that we do that we're the most proud of is our CDP, our Community Design Program. And that is when we come into communities like Fairfield with a team of design professionals who look at your circumstances and what kinds of design problems you're going to want to solve, and then we help you solve them. So, with that, I am going to turn this over to Ed Sankey, who has been involved in the program a lot longer than I have, and has actually served Fairfield in 2002, I believe. He was on a CDP, the original CDP that we did here, so.
Yeah, it is great to be back after last month's session with everybody. We really had a great time. A lot of people were coming in, giving us advice on what we should really be doing. And the sessions that we had, the two various sessions that we had, looked at two sides of the equation here a little bit. I am impressed what you have done the last 15 or 16 years, because there was here over 15 years ago, on the first Community Design Program charrette for Fairfield. It's really encouraging to see what you've done. You've made some major investments in improving your community, and quite frankly, you're known across the state for that, absolutely. Fairfield is up there in that. And so, what we did here over that two-and-a-half-day period, we went through everything you've done over the last 15, 16 years, and tried to absorb as much as we could and synthesize it to the point that we could come up with a real strategy. Your biggest problem here is a lot like three or four other communities in this state, where a bypass kind of went by you. You got your Avenue of the Saints went by six or seven years ago, and it's impacted the community to an extent, a little bit. But there's other communities have that same problem. So, we know how to tackle that in a way. And so, what we did initially, and Dennis will be getting into this, is come up with a way to get people off the bypass and into Fairfield, show them exactly what you have. Your five different avenues into the community are really divergent when you look at them. There's an impact you get when you come in from the west, say, from Des Moines, coming into Fairfield. You get this image of what Fairfield must be like. But then, when you come in, say, from the south or even the north, it's a totally different outlook on the community. And so, what we tried to do is put all this together in one little package, and we're just now presenting this to the city council. So, I'll let Dennis Reynolds come on and tell you exactly how he did all this.
Oh.
We helped him a little.
Yeah, really. Yes. I'm going to put this back here. Yeah, we did. We had a great time, and it was a terrific team effort. Here's the team that was here with you all, and we loved having your participation as well. I'm going to go through these slides in about 30 minutes. You tell me if I'm going too slow or too fast, and then we'll leave plenty of time for questions and discussion. But we talked about wayfinding. Wayfinding is really more than just about signs. It's what are those clues in the environment that tell us there's a destination that I need to be exploring, that I need to direct my energy and efforts towards? So, there's lots of things that influence it, other than just a sign. In fact, quite frankly, the signs are the means of last resort. We'd rather be other clues out there to help you find your way and maneuver through the community. So, we've talked about some of this, and we, again, very impressed with your community and diversity and the pride that you take in this town. So, the goals were, again, to identify a wayfinding program for you that really leveraged the efforts that you've already invested in this topic and in your investments in the community in general, to really understand what makes you unique in terms of physical characteristics, and how you identify yourself as a community, and really reflect that energy and diversity that you have here. And then, to come up with an implementation framework that allows you to do things over time. Some of these are going to be short-term, fairly easy tasks. Some are going to be longer-term and require more investment and more time and effort. So, during the two-and-a-half days here, we had really five major events. We came in, and some of you came and met with us and really told us about the community and what was important to you, and that was very critical for us to understand that. But the tour was great, and it really was very helpful as well to see, again, the range of neighborhoods and environments that guide wayfinding through the community. And then, we had a terrific evening session where we broke into some smaller groups and really tried to prioritize and flag what were the most critical aspects that we needed to really respond to in the community. The next day, then, was a day for us to really draw and work as a team and test ideas and start to put things down on paper. And some of you came in and gave us some feedback during that as well, and then the presentation the following morning. So, some of the facts, and this is kind of like preaching to the choir, you know, upon motherhood, but indeed, you guys have a robust downtown, and you've done some great things here in terms of your public amenities and the visitor experience. We wanted to recognize that sort of tourist-based visitor, as well as people who've lived here all their lives, as well as people who are new residents, to create something that's very coherent and works for all these populations. And we, again, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. You've done some terrific work prior to us coming, and we wanted to recognize that and leverage the good aspects of that previous work. The first night was a lot of fun to try to prioritize, you know, what's most important and what are you most proud of, and the square kept coming up again and again, the loop-trail system that you've implemented more recently, and your diversity and heritage. And again, that really relates to what were the major destinations. Again, it's the square and the trail system, and where that interacts in the community were the two major destinations that came up in that workshop. And so, there was a series of things that were identified for us to work with, understanding signage, understanding how we reinforce, again, Fairfield as a place, and implementation strategies. So, we're not just giving you pretty pictures, but we're giving you a roadmap for the future as well. And again, you can read, I'm not going to read through all these slides. We've got the good stuff is coming up. This is kind of the intro. But you can see some of the things that we took into account as we began to put together our recommendations. So, again, signage can be an environment, it can be a kiosk that talks to you, it can be public art, technology, lots of different things, as well as literal signs. And again, the benefit is to everybody, both residents and visitors. There is an economic return on good wayfinding. If I'm comfortable in a community, I can find my way around, I'm more likely to spend more time there, enjoy myself more, feel more relaxed, and that has a direct economic impact on your community. And it also has an impact in terms of just quality of life. So, principles and drivers, the three Cs came out of that first night, which was fun. I think one of you came up with three of them, and then we added two more. Keys to wayfinding, it has to be cohesive and consistent, predictable, there's a sense of conformity, that there's a real clarity that can quickly be identified how the wayfinding should work, and that there should be some criteria to judge whether it's effective or not. So, finally, to the ideas. As you recall, when we were here last time, we said everybody wants to get right to the ideas. So, here we go. We're getting to those ideas finally. So, one of the first diagrams we generated was this kind of spider web with the loop around it, and that's your trail system, and the places where that trail intersects those five entry points into your community. And we refined that to something that was actually to scale, and that really identified these five key arrival experiences. The billboard experience that you'll see in a minute from the west, a very high-volume approach to your community. The second highest in terms of impact, the silos on the east side as you approach on the state highway. The third one, coming in from the north on Highway 1, the bridge overpass where the pedestrian and bike bridge goes over the highway, and that's bringing you in from your local airport, as well as other communities to the north. The south approach with the barns, I'm going to get it wrong, Mahan?
Masdan.
I did that wrong. Masdan. The Masdan Barns, very cool, start to identify that entry, and if you're going to the hospital, that's clearly an arrival point. And then, the kind of the sleeper, the back door almost, number five, where you come in right by the lake, really beautiful natural environment. So, this was the recommendation for the west entry on Highway 34. Think of it as a billboard that's also a postcard, that's also interactive. So, there's the ability to have an imagery on the upper-right-hand corner that's a video, so you can show if you have a special event, or if you want to highlight a special building or a citizen or a corporate sponsor. So, that can be programmed to always be changing and always activate this large-scale billboard-type of signage. You can see the person just to the left there to give you a sense of scale. And then, it sits just off of the Department of Transportation right away, so that we can do this more easily, kind of backs up to some woods that are right there before you get on the exit ramp or get off on the exit ramp. And we even looked at how we could integrate some black locust wood slats. Maybe they make you remind you of corn cribs, and they anchor the base of the building. And black locust is a very sustainable and durable material.
Dennis, you mentioned also that you started with the west entrance because?
Well, we thought it had the greatest number of visitors and the greatest impact, and certainly a ton of people coming over. We heard about them coming over for entertainment and special events. It also brings people through your Burlington West retail corridor, which has got to generate a lot of activity for the community as well, and maybe one that I'm forgetting.
Well, then, also, the signage that we have there now is not on the highway.
Yes.
It's quite a ways in before you understand that you are, so you don't really get the sense that you've arrived anywhere until
Yes.
you've made about a half a mile drive.
Yeah, we've got to get the decision point while you're on the state highway before the exit. Otherwise, it's too late.
Right.
From the east on the highway, the silos really struck us as these strong, large, iconic structures that really identify this gateway into your community. So, we looked at ways to take the end silo and integrate a graphic. This was a graphic that already exists that shows historic buildings in Fairfield. This was another one that showed words that described Fairfield. And tremendous impact. Here it is a little closer.
That's right.
And there's technology now where this can be a 3M-type material that wraps around it, so it's very durable and cost-effective. It's not necessarily someone painting it from a scaffolding.
Oh, okay.
And I even kind of liked the road maintainer there in the foreground. You might even put an antique tractor or something in there, you know? And there it is with some words maybe that describe your community. From the north, we thought the overpass pedestrian bike bridge was really an opportunity. We like this environment. It's very contained because of the slopes and the woods that are on both sides of this bridge. So, currently, the sign is a little further to the north. It's kind of in no-man's land, kind of too wide open. It kind of gets lost. So, one suggestion was to, when you build a stone sign, which I think you're under study and looking at doing currently, that you move it to this location where it's in a more defined environment with a backdrop. And so, we thought that was a good direction to go. We had some suggestions in terms of typeface and color of the lettering, so it's more legible against the stone. This was a second option that was actually probably a lower-cost option, some metal letters that are cut out of, or letters that are cut out of metal. You even have a local manufacturer here that does this type of work, mount them right on the bridge. Maybe there's an icon of someone riding a bike and some joggers and walkers that are icons, images that are permanently attached to the bridge as well. It speaks to what's happening, it speaks to you, and it's a very distinct identifier for Fairfield. From the fourth, from the south entry, unfortunately, the barns are not visible enough to really be markers. We looked at that, but they're kind of hidden until you get off the highway. So, we looked at doing a modified directional sign that really gets you heading north on the state highway up towards downtown, past the hospital and into the core of your community. So, this was a signage system that we wanted to use elsewhere in the community, but definitely important as you get off of the exit ramp and you stop to make your turn either left or right, that it gets you headed in the right direction, and that you know there's something beyond the hospital. That's probably the key point. You may not know there's a great downtown, or there's an arts and performance center. I got the name wrong. What do you call your, is it arts and?
Arts and convention center.
I knew I had it wrong.
Yeah.
Arts and convention center. That there's something up there to go explore, so you don't just come and have your outpatient or whatever in your town.
How big is that?
Well, again, there's a person next to it, so it's about 10 feet tall. You've got to get it up above cars, so it's visible, because you can't have a car in front of you blocking it. We integrated a very colorful icon on the top. Again, that could be even translucent material, so light shines through it, and it picks up on your branding efforts of the shapes and colors. The northeast entrance, then, very much about nature, the lake and the trail that connects right there. And so, we were looking at creating a window into nature with this entry. We didn't have a real good photograph from the actual highway, but this gives you an idea of the scale, that there could be a place, it's literally a window frame, that you can see as you drive into town on this Route 21. It's a place where people can take a selfie, and everybody's doing selfies nowadays. And so, why not have thousands of selfies at, say, Fairfield with a beautiful lake in the background? We also looked at some of your existing entries that are on Burlington. As you come in from the west, you've done a nice job with some stone walls and a concrete signage, but it gets kind of lost. It's up, kind of up on this hill. There's some natural plantings that kind of obscure it a little bit. So, we looked at extending the stone wall, make it a little larger, a little more in scale with the space, and bringing that concrete slab a little closer to the viewers, so I don't have to look up. It's more in my direct lines of sight. And then, some native plantings that are lower that don't obscure the sign and the wall. Similarly, from the east on Burlington, this is some Photoshop right now. The big shrub on the right obscures the E and the L and the D, and we also suggested some colorful plantings to kind of spice it up. The square, and we love your square. We really think this is an amazing destination identifier for the community, so you'll see a lot of attention to wayfinding as you arrive at this square and interact with it. We even talked about, is the square the right name for it? And we didn't come up with anything better, so I think the square is going to work just fine. We wanted to really have strong, strong markers, especially along Burlington on the southwest and the southeast corner, that direct you into the retail that wraps around the other sides of the square. We also looked at some ways of modifying the street system that we'll talk about in a minute. The other thing that we should talk about on this slide on the north was, as you come in on Highway 1, right now, when you arrive just at the edge of the Arts and Convention Center, you see a large church parking lot on the right, and you see the large parking lot for the Arts and Convention Center on your left. We think that's a great opportunity to screen that parking, create a green gateway, so it becomes a clear identifier that you've left a residential neighborhood and you're in the downtown. And by the way, you did a nice job with a little pocket park at where the Highway 1 turns onto Burlington, and that's a great place, obviously, the highest-volume probably corner you have in your town. So, good job, and keep it up with that effort. So, two-way versus one-way streets. As soon as we got here, we looked at that, and it's something that I get involved with as an urban designer, working with transportation planners around the country a lot. And it's really a strong recommendation that says a two-way street does lots of really good things for your downtown retail. One, it's safer for pedestrians, which is maybe the most important. It also provides much more flexibility for the moving of vehicles around your downtown, so you're not making unnecessary trips and loops that may spit you out away from where you want to go. We want to make it really easy for you to get right as close as you can to your destination. And so, two-way streets are really a key part of that. They act as a calming advice, and again, they reduce the number of trips. So, this would be, it also starts to impact when you come westbound from the east on Burlington, instead of passing some of that retail and the square, you have the ability to right-of-way turn right and move north on Court Avenue into the retail, so it gets more people interacting into your downtown. We also looked at kiosks that are mid-blocks on both Main and Court Avenue. They're places, you have, that city square is a big city block, and there's a lot of desire to cut across through the square, which is good. I'm on the east side. I don't want to have to go all the way around to a shop that may be mid-block on the west. So, these kiosks are located at these mid-block crossings, and they provide an opportunity for a map that's interactive, and it helps traffic calming, slow down those cars as they drive around the square, and it provides a clear destination. So, we had three different options for these kiosks. They show maps of multiple destinations, as well as major destinations on the arrows. And this could be a video, interactive, even touchscreen. It could talk to your phone and answer questions as well. And here's a third one that kind of picks up the black locust wood slats at the base and has the touchscreen option as a part of it as well. And we even began to create a little map that color-coded your uses, because we found, we were meeting each other for lunch or whatever, and we'd go, well, is there a restaurant on the other side of the square? And we couldn't tell by looking at the sign. The name didn't tell us it was a restaurant. So, this is a simple map that just color-codes it. Is it a restaurant? Is it retail, or is it providing a service? And we thought that was kind of a fun way to also leverage your branding efforts in a fun, colorful way.
I missed that the first time.
This was one of those low-cost, high-impact recommendations. We love the square. We love all the trees and the gazebo in the middle. You were having the Arts Festival, I believe it was called, when we were here. But you really can't see across the square, and you want to have that visual connection so I can look all the way across. You want to see people shopping, see the shops. And so, we're suggesting just remove the lower limbs up until about eight, nine feet up, so that those views remain across and clear. It's safer. You still get the benefit of the shade and the beautiful greenery of the trees, but I think you'll be amazed how much larger and more flexible your town square will be with this very low-cost, high-impact recommendation. We loved what you started with the alleys, and we're suggesting you continue that and leverage it even further. This shows the alley looking north to the courthouse, and a simple lighting graphic that, the bright purple on the right, that really identifies a gateway, some signage that reinforces that. We even show a gobo light, which is a theater light that projects a pattern on a pavement, in this case, maybe fireflies or stars, and really activate these spaces. And you can either do projection art, like on the right, which creates one big image, or provide lots of opportunities for local artists, as well as other artists you invite in, to create individual pieces of art integrated into that experience. It can be gritty. It can include benches and tables as well, and really a terrific, different type of experience than the town square. This diagram shows the, how you could stage an event like the farmer's market. We visited your farmer's market in the park to the north and like it, and we think that works great, and that's fine if you want to leave it there. But if you want to consider bringing the farmer's market down to the square, this shows how you could close off one of the streets. This is where that two-way system really helps you, gives you more flexibility, and it may be a benefit to your local retailers and coffee shops and restaurants if that farmer's market activity was on the square, as opposed to a little more isolated a few blocks to the north. We also looked at testing pop-up parks, which these are saying you actually have a good supply of parking. And so, if you look at just removing two parking spaces and put in a very low-cost mini-park that has maybe a tree and a couple of tables and chairs, this can also really help your local retailers to have a place to meet, to have, drink the coffee outside, and frees up some of that sidewalk space. The other thing this diagram shows is to really reinforce the pedestrian connections on all four corners. Sometimes, your streetscape right now doesn't really let you cross the street like you'd really kind of want to. So, kind of look at those pedestrian patterns and be sure I can always continue straight if I want, or if I want to turn left, I can get across the street clearly. Municipal parking lots, we, it was great. It was helpful for us to see those, and we said, you know, if you call them free public parking as opposed to municipal lots, you may even get more use. We weren't sure, you know? Do I have to work for the city to park in a municipal lot? So, free, oh, sure, I'll park there. So, they're actually very strategically located. You've done a great job of keeping your street parking, as well as dispersing some of these surface lots, and we just think rebranding them as free public parking, some greenery around the perimeter, shade tree and a bench. So, this was the one down in the southeast corner of the downtown. Some fairly, relatively modest cost to really improve these as destinations and make them more inviting. Burlington, you know, a great economic generator for the community, large-scale in terms of these buildings and the roadway and the power lines even along the south side of it. So, how can you introduce some banners that are large-scale, maybe even larger than we're showing here, that add some color and communicate what's important to you as a community, your diversity, your vitality, and all that's unique about you? We also looked at how these banners could have lighting integrated that's solar-powered. So, at night, when those shoppers are most likely to be in this zone during the wintertime, that those banners are clearly visible. This shows a little bit bigger banner. It shows a small tree that goes underneath the power lines on the south, and then a really large-scale tree, large tree like an oak or a hybrid elms, which have the really large branching habit that's appropriate to scale to some of your big-box users that are along the corridor. It just really says something about you as a community, that you reinforce the quality of the environment. And even some no-mow grasses. Think of it as a nice, the rough in a nice golf course, and you don't have to mow it, but it's, it looks great. Would you like to talk about a little bit of technology while I
Sure. Sure.
Take a break? They're probably tired of hearing my voice.
Well, we just, let me see. Developed, oops, I went the wrong way. We just, the foundation entered a competition that's called the SM Hack, and a team of programmers chose our project, and they developed an app for mobile with audio that provides walking tours of downtown Des Moines. And we were hoping that we would be able to just have another And we were hoping that we would be able to just have another set of buildings and have it work for Fairfield as well. That's going to be a little more complicated, we found. But the way that it works is that you just get it off of the Apple Store or Android Store. We have organized ours by tours, buildings. Actually, we have another category called architects. And then there's a little about section so you can talk about your community. But this is different than just an app that tells you about the restaurants and it's like, it's not really a tourism app. This is really for architecture or historic sites. So your cultural district would really benefit by having this. And this is kind of how it looks with the individual buildings. And the great thing about it is that it has audio so that you don't have to, somebody's not going to be standing there with their device in front of their eyes, they're going to be looking at the building. So, we just thought that would be a pretty nice way to get people finding their way through Fairfield architecturally or within any historic sites and that kind of thing.
Thanks. Claudia, what, what app would we be able to look at? Do you know the name of it?
This one actually was developed for us.
Yes, but you said there is-
But it's on our, it's through WordPress is how we manage it. So if you have a WordPress website, then you can add this somehow and, and we can find out more about how. But because really, I did a lot of research on different tours in different cities and ours is kind of unique even though there's so many apps available now.
Great.
But having that audio as part of it and then being able to manage it from your regular website, those are the big benefits.
Great, thank you.
So it can be really inexpensive.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about to expand what you want to do in this community is think about nighttime events. And one of the problems you have right now is the lighting in the community in some areas is a little bit nonexistent practically. And so, we explored a couple of ways that you could do this without having to invest in a whole lot of infrastructure to get there. In other words, light on the ground wiring to get the lighting situation. And what a lot of communities are starting to investigate now are actually active solar array systems that are tied into the lighting itself. This allows you to put an independent lighting fixture in any given location and as long as you have access to that sun, it's going to work. You put it up high enough that people don't mess with the system itself. It can even be combined with wind generation systems on it too. Here's an example of a, a solar panel that actually wraps around the column itself. So the sun can be spinning around summer or winter, any time of the year and these collectors will catch it. Load it up during the daytime and what we're finding is a lot of communities just can leave them on all night because it doesn't pay to turn them off at all because they will develop up to the point you can leave them on, which helps for security in your community too. They did mention one that we did at Sac City. We did a Veterans Memorial in front of the courthouse, or we, after we restored the courthouse. And they wanted it lit up so that it was impressive for people that could stop by in the evenings and see it. They found out that it was easier just to leave it on all night long than to try to turn it off thinking they were saving energy. But you really don't save energy with these systems. And that adds to the security in the community. You're going to have a lot less problems, I think, in that situation. This particular application right here takes the solar and puts it up top, across the top of the pole and lights down below. Fairly easy way to get through it. This has a comment, this is really pretty interesting. They've actually taken small wind turbines on the top of these LED fixtures. They actually spin around with the wind, but on each of those three blades on the wind turbine, there are solar collectors and they actually feed the power when there isn't wind. So you can actually have these going around just about any time day or night, which attracts people to a space that's active, things are going on. Could have a few of these around the square. And now that you're talking about lifting that veil up under the trees, we can actually see the square right now. And when you think about it, tell me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but it'll be a lot better for your conifer trees anyway. There's all that low-level growth that's there basically is killing off the tree in the long run. You want to clip it up high, clean everything down below so people can use it and have the shade from that tree. So that's pretty much the concept we do on the square, but that can be used all over the town. Any questions on that?
My turn.
Okay.
I'm not going to take very long. How do you control this?
Bottom air.
So, wayfinding in the value and structure of the community is often reflected in wayfinding. And it's, it's just critical, but how do you get there? I mean, this is kind of the easy part, coming up with all these ideas, but making it happen is, can be a challenge because some of what we're talking about are easy things to do right away, some are going to take a long time. So, one of the things that we thought would be important is to consider the idea of creating a commission or a committee, but a commission that is represented by all the different organizations that have been involved with this to, to this point. So that you have people that are representing all the different interests, some of whom have different interests in wayfinding, but at least there'd be a group of people that year after year after year can see this implemented because it will take a long time to do it. And these are some suggestions about who could be represented, but that's certainly up to you. Responsibilities would be to identify the needs and opportunities and, and what the priorities are and to initiate projects, hire consultants for certain projects, make sure that there's continuity and, you know, you go back to the five Cs that we talked about and incorporating your branding and just find what needs are going to be for implementing the costs. There are a number of sources for funding. I'm not going to get into any of these right now, but there's, I'm sure that Mike's familiar with a lot of funding sources in the state. And then also, we had an experience, when I was involved with the planning for East Village in Des Moines, we had asked a consultant to come in, he was a real estate consultant, to look at the value, what, what, what value did certain ideas bring to a community? And it was very effective. Didn't cost a lot of money to do it and it just helped people understand how much, how much bang they're going to get for the dollars of the investment. But there are people out there that can help you with that. We also put together a list of all of these things that can happen in terms of their costs versus whether you can do them now or in the near future or in, in the long run. And so, you've got this diagram and then also, and then we also have this spreadsheet too that you can use as a working tool.
So we, a little, a little long, but you know, I told someone in the back we'd be a little shorter than that, but hopefully you understand we're really excited about this information and a lot of it. So, really appreciate the opportunity to come back and do this.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So I think first, I'd just like to open it up to anyone who has any, any questions, either general or specific. And then if, if not, what, we wanted to talk about were next steps and now that we've had an opportunity to have a more full presentation, we, we, the members of the press were not able to be here today, but I've already forwarded them the PowerPoint and I'm sure they'll be calling with some questions, so we'll be able to get a lot of the information out to the community right away. Counsel, we don't have a quorum tonight, but what, what we might have done if we did was to just ratify the presentation in, in general, nothing specific, just accept it from, from the group for, and thank them for the work that they've done on our behalf because, you know, these were a lot of volunteer hours that came from some people who have extraordinary careers in this field and we are the benefit of some really great creative advice. So we really do appreciate that quite a lot. We have had a working group following some of our branding initiatives and our refocus on our tourism in the downtown that has been discussing wayfinding for the past year and a half or so. We've met since the presentation, all of the members that are on that committee were willing to, to continue the effort. So we'll appoint the commission, it will probably be many of those members. They do represent all of the organizations that you'd mentioned or just about. We'll make sure that we haven't missed anyone or if there's anyone else that would like to. So that at our next session would be something that I'll bring to the council with names and recommendations to appoint. And then we'll start working on some of the goals, setting priorities, seeing if there's any modifications to what has been presented, how we're going to do it. Obviously, we'll talk about funding short-term and long-term for the projects through its priority, but I think you've given us really an easy way to start having this manifest within our community in some very exciting ways. So, counsel, anything else? Anyone else with any questions? Mike, any closing comments? Okay, yes. Can you come up to the podium because we are filming tonight?
Hi, I'm Lauren Towne and I'm one of the members of the Beautification Commission. And I'm curious on your pruning recommendation in the square. Are you suggesting that we prune also the evergreens all the way up?
Yes, right. And what Ed was saying is over time, those lower branches typically don't get enough light to really thrive anyway, so they're, they're causing an energy drain as opposed to supporting the overall plant. So just taking those lower limbs and removing them, it's about as tall as you can put your hands or maybe a ceiling, eight, nine feet. You know, you want to do it at a time of the year, late fall when things aren't stressed or early spring. But yeah, it can be very beneficial. I just did this for the International Headquarters of PEO, which, there may be a PEO member's in the room even. And they're really pleased how it changed the look of their, their campus in Des Moines.
Thank you. And, and I think a, a number of the headlines that will come out of this that we anticipate also are the two-way streets on the square. So now that that cat's out of the bag, we'll, we will start to get some feedback on that. I think our city engineer can tell us probably a little bit about what we, what we can and can't do or what we're looking at as far as a challenge in dealing with that. Our Chamber of Commerce and representing the merchants in the downtown, getting a sense from them about how they feel about it. It's interesting that the other recommendation that's maybe a sub-headline is farmer's market moving. We, we don't control the farmer's market, we're not suggesting that that's a done deal either. But we have had retailers on the square, I think in some of your meetings, Dietra expressed the fact that they would like to see the farmer's market back up on the square. When I have mentioned that to other downtown retailers, they absolutely agree. And, and I think people who do like to come to our downtown on a Saturday morning also agreed that having a little bit more activity would be, would be very beneficial. So those are a couple of the headlines that'll come out, but we will be dealing with those responsibly with all of our organizations. And our department heads also, understanding of park and recreation, our street department, there are issues that they're going to be involved with as well. So, we would either like you to be part of our commission going forward or certainly be available to our group. Rebecca, you had a question?
I know the subject of having two-way streets downtown has been entertained before. I remember years ago, that was something we discussed. I'd like to understand more about the safety because I thought I was hearing that two-way streets are safer around the square. Could someone comment on that?
Sure, certainly.
Sure. Right. It's been a, a trend that we've seen in urban design that's more and more emerging over the past 10 or 15 years, certainly very strongly seen as a way for traffic calming that supports that. When you have a two-way traffic, it has a calming effect on traffic. When you have one way, think of it as you're on a exit ramp or an entrance ramp. You typically go faster, you think you're being pushed through something very quickly. When it's two-way traffic, you automatically slow down and, and become more a part of that environment. So it's safer in that regard. The other thing is it, it does eliminate unnecessary trips. So, so often someone makes the turn and they realize, "Oh, I have to make another right and another right and another right to get to where I really want." If that person can just make one right turn, that's one less opportunity for a conflict with a pedestrian or another vehicle. Change is always challenging for communities and streets certainly are one of those things that, you know, are always challenging for people to understand, but I would encourage you to look at some benchmark communities where this has been happening over the past decade or so and how they've really benefited tremendously from these types of programs. They're not easy, as a traffic engineer will tell you. Redoing traffic signs and stoplights and things, that's not, that's not easy, but people are finding it's well worth the investment.
Dennis, we had a great experience in Des Moines with Locust, which was a one-way street.
Bill, would you come to the microphone?
Yeah. Yeah. Couple of examples in Des Moines, and I know these are, we don't have a, a square like you do, a great square, but what, Locust was a one-way street for years and years and years and there was a lot of resistance to making that two-way. It just works fantastic now and same way with Court Avenue. So, I know all the retailers are, are very appreciative. The, the thing is that we don't have, in Des Moines maybe, the difference is that we don't have the through traffic that we used to have. And, and not that you have, a lot of people just wanting to pass through this community, but that was the big problem before. And why they made them one-way to start with is to get the traffic going through. Well, that, that's not beneficial for the retailers.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I was, just as far as the history Rebecca, as you mentioned, we've discussed it before. I was kidding Ed because the first time he visited here in 2002, their recommendation was to do more one-way streets. They had a completely different rationale for it, which made some sense to us also, but-
You've been educated.
But, but then again, in two, it was one of the things that, that your work did recommend were the connecting green spaces with the downtown gardens and the central square and the courthouse lawns and Howard Park. And it wasn't until 2006 when we really started building those out over a couple of years that we really started to see the downtown change and, and transform in a way. And then there were a lot more activities on the square and people inventing new activities to have on the square. Now we've gotten to a point where the rationale for the two-way makes a whole lot of sense because if you are visiting the community, you, we are confusing you, we are missing, we are missing some folks. It's, if we do this, it's all of us who are going to have to suck it up and learn where we, where we can and can't turn. So, but for the benefit of the community, hopefully we can go through that. So, so the rationale I think is stronger now Rebecca because the square has really changed in its destination, quality and attractiveness.
What about making the whole thing a ped mall? That's all I had to say.
Okay. So the question is what about making the whole thing a ped mall? The whole square?
Yeah, I can respond to that. I mean, when I was- I mean, when I was in graduate school, that was very much a thing to do was ped malls. Out of the literally hundreds that were done, there's a handful that remain successful. It was found that taking the cars out of the equation took the visibility of those retailers down to the point where it made those streets dead. And so we really realized that you need to be able to drive and see that, even if you don't shop that day, you see that retail and you say, "I'm going to come back tomorrow or this weekend." If I'm not driving down the street, it's out of mind, it's out of sight, it doesn't get used. So it was an idea that was tried back in the 70s and 80s, but again, very few of them became sustainable in the long term. The ones that did were like Lincoln Street in Miami, downtown Denver has one. These are much, much bigger metropolitan areas where they had a bigger population.
Bigger populations, I think, more density.
Yeah.
Santa Monica.
Yeah, right. Yeah, Walnut Street, I was on the team that just reopened Walnut Street, actually. It was closed.
That's right. That was frustrating for a visitor too. I can't turn on Walnut Street.
Yeah.
Well, and the having to switch it back was-
To two-way public in-
It took quite a while because it's a big street.
I started working on it in 2011.
Yeah, I was happy, yeah.
So it's been six years. But good question.
Well, and back to the two-way, two-way around the square, Mary, I believe you mentioned that this was the third consultant that has recommended it. And one of the, one of the consultants that I'm familiar with was during the complete streets process and the blue zone process. And they saw the benefit to the two-way street at that time allowing more room for multiple modes of transportation, giving maybe some of that parking, the two lanes and then the third lane becomes a bike lane around the square to allow the bikes around the square. So I just wanted to bring up that it's not just this group that has mentioned the two-way streets, but some of the other groups that have been in the community in the last couple of years.
Right. Thanks, Melanie. You're absolutely right.
The multimodal aspect is very important too. You're right.
Right.
You've got one lane too many probably right now. And that can, that can turn into some bike lanes or some green space, bigger sidewalks, lots of things.
Yeah. I think it really hit me when, you know, obviously this study is about enhancing the experience of the downtown. I think you've brought to light the fact that that would add really greatly to it. Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
That's so true.
Okay. So thank you all very much for taking more of your time again. We really, really appreciate it and we will keep you posted on our progress.
We'll be back.
Okay, good. Please, let us know when you are. So we won't be taking any action tonight. Counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.